Here. Director Hamilton. Director Mindy A. Teramos. Director Mays.
Here.
Director Olson.
Here.
Director Wilson.
So, Madam Chair, we do not have a quorum yet.
We do not. We do not vote at this point, so I don't know that having a quorum is, Janice, is it necessary for us to have a quorum?
No, there is not. You're not taking any action, so you can go ahead and review the presentation.
Okay, that's what I thought. I do know that Director Case is joining us, so at some point, if that's important to note in the minutes, Gwen or Beth just maybe take notice of when she joins us, but I didn't think that was important, but. So, um, second on our agenda is the presentation of the proposed budget. So, welcome to Milwaukee Area Technical Colleges Public Hearing on the Budget. Jeff Howell, who is Vice President of Finance, and Ginny Rothie, who is the Director of Facilities Planning, Sustainability, and Construction, will present the fiscal year 2223 budget to the public. So I will turn it over to them.
Thank you, Board Chair Olson, and welcome everyone to the, uh, to the public hearing. Next slide, please. Okay, um, we're gonna talk, uh, I'm gonna talk about the operating funds first, and our largest and most prominent, uh, operating fund is our general fund. That's where education, um, primary education, um, budget comes from. And, um, if you see, we have reserves, um, of forty million, forty point three million dollars, and it's, and it's, uh, that amount is not expected to change with this budget because we're presenting a balanced budget, and the percentage is based on, uh, revenue. And you can see the percentage for this year, we expect a balanced budget, and, um, we anticipate a twenty-three point one-two percent. Um, our reserves are gonna be twenty-three point one-two percent, and then based on the revenue for, uh, the estimated fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, and then for the, the, for budget year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, we anticipate, um, there's no change, as I mentioned, and the percentage would go up slightly because of, um, lower revenue in, um, fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. So you can see there's, okay, you, no, that's good. We're good. So you can see the, um, the changes, the large pieces in revenue, the re, um, we have a two-point-seven percent increase in tuition and fees. Um, this is primarily, primarily driven by an improved, approved increase in tuition of one-point-seven percent, and an incremental, um, amount of anticipated students. We're anticipating FTE count to go up seven-point-five percent. We have a, uh, point-seven percent increase in tax levy based on net new construction. Um, so we're not, uh, individual taxpayers are not impacted, but the new taxpayers who come on board will, uh, make up that additional increase. Uh, there's a point-two percent increase in contract and other revenue, and a de, um, a projected, uh, point-three percent decrease in state aid, and a five-point-one decrease in federal revenue, HERF funds. Um, in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, um, we used, we have, we budgeted six-point-one million, um, dollars in federal revenue, or six, six of it was, um, HERF funds, and, um, point-one million was federal, uh, aid that was provided to the college. And next year, we anticipate, um, a one per, um, one million, uh, HERF funds of one, one, one million, so the decrease is five-point-one for the year, for a total of one-point-seven decrease in revenue for the year. Next slide, please. So here's the major categories of, um, revenues for the general fund. You can see local property taxes compared to twenty-two, compared to twenty-three, tuition and fees. Um, as I mentioned, the slight increase because of incremental, the pay, the, um, tuition increase, slight increase, and also the additional, um, FTEs, state aid declined slightly. Federal, that's the HERF, primarily the HERF funds decrease in contract and other revenue. And there's the, there's the pie chart that shows the percentage of those. Next slide, please. So salaries, um, we anticipate, um, a three-point-eight million decrease in salaries this year. What we're doing is there's quite a few things that are, that are happening. There's, we're looking at, um, a reorganization with open, and we're holding positions open because of the tight budget that we have. So there's, that's the portion of the salaries that we're seeing a decrease in. We see a slight increase in, in fringe benefits, um, primarily healthcare. Um, discretionary spend is increasing one-point-four million. With the students coming back to school, we anticipate that going up slightly because when they're in the classrooms, there's more, uh, classroom supplies associated with, uh, the discretionary spend. Next slide, please. And, um, this is, uh, how we report, we, what I just showed you are what we, our actual expenses in this current, view here is basically what they call by function, general funds by function, so we have instructional, instructional resources, student services, general institutional physical plant, and plus planned cost containment. And as I mentioned, the planned cost containment is, um, we're, we're re, um, as the positions, we're holding positions open, and we're also, as I mentioned, um, looking at the positions, with the current structure, we've had lower FTEs over the years, so we're looking to, um, right-size the organization, so to speak. So we're, and we're doing that through attrition, and as positions come open, those will be held, and we'll review each position as it comes open, and, um, we'll determine how we might restructure those positions as we go forward. Next slide, please. This is Fund Five. Fund Five is, is considered the, is enterprise, or enterprise fund is considered Fund Five. And you can see the, um, each of the areas where that, what, and this is basically how we, we feel the operations are gonna perform. You have, um, uh, whether they'll have a surplus or a deficit, you can see twenty-twenty-two, uh, the estimated actual compared to the proposed budget in twenty-twenty-three. Um, for the bookstore, what we're looking at is there's more, what we refer to as OER, Open Educational Resources, so that's a lower cost to our students, which means lower revenue, lower profit, for the bookstore, which is a benefit for our students. Childcare, um, we had, um, we had less students in school, and we, in, um, in, in this current fiscal year, so we had less childcare, um, expenses. So next year, we anticipate with more students coming back to have additional expenses. And childcare has kind of been the area where we've, um, had to subsidize. We've also had grants, I should say, in fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. And, um, you can see that, um, we, and we use HERF funding as well. And so the, uh, the, the next year's budget does not include any HERF funding, and we anticipate more students coming back. Food service is very similar. We're gonna have more, or, uh, students back, and we have, um, less HERF funds to support, uh, the food service operations. So food service is anticipated to have a lower or a greater loss, um, in fiscal year twenty-twenty-three compared to twenty-twenty-two. Parking, another, um, primarily parking, we have the, um, the parking structure that, that we own, and that the activity in the parking structure has gone up. And other are some of the, um, ancillary, um, operations that we had, like, um, the, there's different food services that we, uh, sources that we had that, um, brought in money. But those were pretty much shut down during, um, the years of COVID, and primarily last year, those things will be opening up, but the primary driver of that is, is the additional people parking downtown. So you can see there was a surplus in, anticip, there's an anticipated surplus in twenty-twenty-two, and we anticipate the loss primarily driven by, um, the, uh, lost HERF, um, funding that we had, what we will have in twenty-twenty-three. Um, so you can see the beginning reserves and the ending reserves. So we'll still have, at the end of fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, we anticipate having, uh, five million in reserves for Fund Five, and this is pre, um, Milwaukee PBS. Um, Milwaukee PBS is also, um, considered, um, an enterprise, uh, organization. So we anticipate how we use FCC funds to balance the budget for, for Milwaukee Public Television, so you can see that there's no, there's no surplus or loss, but the reason, and we anticipate the reserves being the same for both years. Next slide, please. This is, um, this is all of our funds, and this is, uh, we're, this is something that we're required to put together, by function. So if you look at, um, the sources, the sources are the revenue that we take in, the ins, and the uses of funds are the outs. And so if you look at, uh, local property taxes, it's our largest source of funds. Uh, state aid, federal aid, tuition, and you can see all the expenses, other institutional auxiliary services. And we borrow thirty-nine million. We borrow, um, eighteen million for, we, we borrow eighteen million for, uh, infrastructure, that's the one-point-five every month that we authorize and approve. And then we have twenty-one million in, in capital equipment that we borrow typically in the month of August. And so you can see the uses of funds. Instruction, instructional resources, student services, physical plant, and those, and once again, the cost containment near the bottom to balance all our sources and uses of funds. Next slide, please. So capital expenditures and borrowings, um, during, um, the upcoming fiscal year, we will borrow eighteen million, as I just mentioned. And then the twenty-one for capital equipment, the eighteen million for construction, and twenty-one for capital equipment purchases. And, um, debt service, service payments, debt service is made up of principal and interest for the year. The total would be forty-three point four million dollars for the year. Of that four million will be allocated to, um, debt service of Milwaukee Pub, Public Television. The total principal um, is forty-one million, and the total interest is, is two-point-one million. This is a historic view of our mill rate. They, uh, a mill rate, the mill rate, and then also the impact on a hundred-thousand-dollar home. The tax on a, on a hundred-thousand-dollar home. So you can see, um, our mill rates have gone down consistently. We don't know exactly what, um, the mill rate will be for twenty-twenty-three, but we anticipate, um, we, we, we show this every year, we know it, it'll probably be slightly lower, but we have to wait for October, when we get the, um, the net new construction and all the, the finalized tax figures from the Wisconsin Department of Revenue, and we'll amend, um, we'll amend that number in October, when we have our board, at our October board meeting, once we have the Wisconsin Department of Revenue information. But the good news is you can see the tax on a hundred-thousand-dollar home is, has been declining. And this is this, even though these are showing, um, six years, um, it's been happening quite a bit longer than that. It's probably about eight years or so. Next slide, please. So capital equipment, these, this is the breakdown of the twenty, we have twenty-one million, like I mentioned earlier, we have twenty-one million that we authorized for capital equipment. So there's been a higher, capital has been a bit more expensive lately as, as we buy, because we make capital purchases, as you know, uh, the cost of, of key, um, capital items has gone up. And so what we've been doing is we, as we retire capital, we, we have computers, we have other equipment, things that, um, have, and our end of life, or, or the college, um, uses up and is ready to, uh, dispose of. If it has a useful life, what we do is we go through the auction, and, uh, over the years, we've been auctioning, um, equipment um, that was no longer used by the college, and so what we were able to do is use some of the reserves so that the funds that we received from auction go into our, um, capital account. So we're able to spend twenty-two-point-five million dollars, so it's one-point-five million that we're using from our reserves, um, our capital reserves, doing, because we had a, a much higher demand for capital equipment, uh, this year than we've had in previous years, and like I said, it's primarily driven by the increase in costs of, of key component capital. Next slide, please. Okay, now, um, I would like to turn it over to Ginny Rothie. Ginny, are you ready to?
I'm ready.
Your session. Thank you, Ginny.
Thanks, Jeff. Yeah, and good evening, um, everyone. Uh, so I am going to be running through the eighteen million capital infrastructure and remodeling budget. Jeff just completed describing, um, how that budget originates and that we do, um, borrow eighteen million for capital infrastructure and remodeling. So I'll be presenting, um, a preview of the next year's budget and how we intend, how we plan to spend the capital infrastructure remodeling funds, and I'll also highlight some building remodeling projects from this current fiscal year. Next slide. Uh, so as a preview for next year's budget, um, we are moving forward with a number of instructional facility improvements. We are moving forward with the plan to add a heavy plate welding lab to the Walker Square campus. Um, we also are doing a number of, uh, general classrooms that are in our technical and applied sciences building, um, for general classroom remodels. We will be adding a STEM center to the downtown campus, um, adding a truck driving, dedicated truck driving range and track to the Oak Creek campus, improving a number of faculty offices that are original at the Oak Creek campus and quite cramped. Um, so adding better conditions for faculty, and, uh, then diving into some lab remodels for both the IT security program and the World Languages Lab. We will be moving forward with a number of sustainability projects, so these are infrastructure improvements to our facilities district-wide that have a payback and energy payback, so things like LED replacements will be uh, tackling a number of those at the Mequon Campus. Um, life safety and security will be moving forward with upgrades to our fire, fire panel mass notification systems, access controls, so swipe access, um, and the ability for our public safety to, uh, better control locking doors, and adding sprinkling to our main building in particular, starting next year. And then we are moving forward as usual with updates to our infrastructure, our, um, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, conditioning systems, electrical systems, and tackling the backlog of deferred maintenance that we have. Next. Uh, so for next year, for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, we spent quite a deal of time this past year on strategic planning, both, uh, generally for facilities and targeted specifically for the academic, um, strategic planning process. So we will be applying a number of projects from both the academic multi-year plan and the facilities multi-year plan into the plan for how we are budgeting our capital construction for next year. So we have a number of public sa, spaces that we will be updating as we have in previous years. Uh, we will, as I mentioned, um, previously, be doing general classroom updates, and particularly making good progress on adding connected and hybrid classrooms that have technology in place to serve our students remotely as well as in person. And we are moving forward, as I mentioned, with building infrastructure and sustainability. So this is, um, sorry, that picture, yep, that picture is, um, a precedent image of, of a potential glimpse at what our new STEM center may look like. Next. Uh, so the, the selection process for capital construction is, um, a lengthy and collaborative process, as most things in higher ed and at M A T C are. So, uh, we do have a list that was added to this year for requests from across the campus for needs and physical spaces for updates and renovations. So the number of requests we receive, uh, those projects from previous years don't go away, the spaces still need to be updated. So we're at about eighty-five million on that list in requested renovations. We know that our goal is eighteen million that we spend each year on capital improvements. So we do go through a process of prioritizing each of the requests that come in. This is a glimpse of some of those categories that we prioritize and rank our projects by, so obviously, uh, the risk of the project, if it doesn't go forward, and code compliance is, um, a weighted area. Alignment to our strategic plan and our many different, uh, strategic plans at M A T C. The impact to, um, the industry from, from the addition of these academic labs or programs. Um, we evaluate the existing conditions, if it's a new lab, or if it's a renovation or a remodel of an existing lab or space. Um, we do calculate the cost or savings from doing the project, from things like energy savings or revenue potential. Um, and then the, the rankings help, um, guide the discussion that is, um, put together through the president's cabinet and, and discussed at that level from all representatives across, uh, the leadership of the college. Next. So, um, how the eighteen million this next year does, uh, break down, we, uh, we are proposing spending four-point-three-six million on instructional spaces, five-point-three million on high-visibility common spaces, so these are spaces that most all students would be impacted by, uh, six-point-seven million on facilities, infrastructure upgrades, and then our typical one-point-six million that cover core construction costs, and we'll get into those details next. So for the instructional capital, this is a glimpse of the projects, uh, that are being planned for next year. Um, I did mention a few of them earlier. We have classroom lab updates and IT security. Uh, the STEM list here are general classrooms and our STEM program that are getting, um, updated as well. Most of them are in our technical and applied sciences building and greater than fifty, sixty years old, uh, before, since they've seen a remodel. Um, we are working on that heavy plate welding lab at Walker Square, as I mentioned, the STEM center, and I believe the rest of them we ran through earlier. So next. Uh, for high-visibility and improved accessibility construction, we will be adding a restroom outdoor facility by the athletic fields at the Oak Creek campus. This will provide lockers and restroom facilities to the athletic, both the athletic teams that play out there, and also the proximity, the better proximity for students that are on the EVOC track, as well as the fire tower. Um, they will have restroom facilities available at a closer reach for them. Uh, we will be remodeling the third floor of the Student Center. We have been working through the Student Center multi-year plan and, uh, recapturing spaces within that building, um, for student use. And, uh, we will be adding a new rec area and convenience store to the third floor of the S Building. The convenience store will offer extended hours beyond when the cafeteria is available for food service for students. We will be targeting sets of restrooms to improve as, as usual. We do have continued need in our district and particularly downtown to keep updating rest, restrooms and improve accessibility features within those restrooms, so second floor of S Building and third floor of C Building will be targeted. Uh, we also will be renovating on the second floor of the Student Center, general advising areas, student life areas, and student resource center areas. At the Oak Creek campus, we will be, um, working on the pathway office and admission center and student life offices, um, that are on the ground level of the Oak Creek campus, bringing them in alignment with the, um, the improved student service model at, that we have been rolling out district-wide. Next. So these are some, um, concepts, uh, and some renderings of both proposed and planned, um, construction. So on the left, that's an, an example of what the outdoor restroom locker facility at the Oak Creek Athletic Fields would be like. On the right, this is a glimpse of some of those common space improvements that we are, um, uh, working on currently in this current fiscal year for updates to the Student Center, um, Student Center building. So this is a picture of the ground-level entry to the Student Center experience and a, an updated, um, glimpse of what it will be like. Next. Um, so here's a picture of, um, on the left, some of our challenged restrooms that we're still dealing with. You can see we've had a number of, um, tiles that have needed to be replaced that don't exactly match in the past. We are struggling with, uh, facilities that don't work, um, and, and, uh, fifty, sixty-year-old finishes in those spaces. So you can see on the right, an example of, of a newly renovated area that we've done, uh, with some of our restroom upgrades. So these are what we're continuing to roll forward. Next. For facilities, infrastructure, and core construction costs, um, you can see the categories that we will be tackling this next year. So we do have, um, a number of, uh, district-wide emergencies that do, um, pop up every year, so we do have a budget set aside for that. We also have a budget set aside for developing scope on, on the following year's projects. So we have a three-year plan, year two, we will be moving into design with some of these fees on. Um, looking at next, uh, fiscal twenty-four's list as we start planning and designing those. Uh, we also have, um, as, as Jeff mentioned earlier, seen quite an increase in construction costs this next year. So we do have a bucket of, uh, funding for contingencies on project, uh, that do exceed the budgeted costs for change orders. Um, and then we do have, um, a number of minor remodels that are very smaller, small-dollar amounts, uh, for, for quick updates on carpet and paint that we can use from that, uh, budget as well, and then the salaries for, uh, the, the facilities planning, construction team in that area. Uh, we do have, as I mentioned, our, our first phase of the main building, fire panel mass notification and sprinkling project that we will be tackling in the main building, um, and continuing with access control district-wide. We will be doing a series of roofs at Oak Creek for updates that are at their, end of their useful life, and we will be replacing the main, uh, vestibules and doors at the Student Center S Building. We also have, um, uh, a need for, um, for not delaying concrete improvements to our lower seat parking deck, um, at the downtown main campus. So we do have some cracked and spalling concrete that we need to address and, um, shore up the structural, um, on that, on that parking lot. And then we, every year, do updates to our HVAC and electrical systems, uh, because again, we have, uh, quite the backlog of deferred maintenance, and we'll be chipping away at that. Uh, we also will be replacing and expanding the size of the S Building elevator to serve students better and improve our accessibility there. Next. So here's a picture of a project from this current fiscal year. We did, um, we did improve the baseball field at, uh, Oak Creek Campus. This is a picture of the completed project. It was an artificial turf field that was installed, and beneath it, a two-hundred-thousand-gallon stormwater caption bay, capture basin that we did receive a large grant from Milwaukee Metropolitan's, Metropolitan Sewage District to do. So that's a picture of that. Next. Uh, this year also, we have underway this summer, um, the installation of the electric lineman program. Uh, the line mechanic program will be seeing a remodel to an interior space to allow for interior, um, training to occur as well as the outdoor facility that exists at the Mequon Campus. Next. And here are renderings of our completed project at the new admission center at the Milwaukee campus. So this is a glimpse of the waiting area at the new admission center, if you haven't seen that on the ground level in the Student Center, as well as the new coffee shop that is adjacent to those spaces as well. Next. So, Jeff, I'll pass it back to you.
Thanks, Ginny. Thank you for your, your presentation. Um, so if, if there's any questions, um, please don't hesitate to contact me. My contact information, my phone and my, my email address is here for anyone who has any questions. Does anybody have any questions that we can answer right now that you might, um, have immediate, uh, questions with? have immediate questions with? Hearing none. I think we've ended our presentation.
Okay, and Beth, I'm just double checking again, because we did have an agenda item of comments from the public. We did not receive any comments from the public. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. If there is nothing else, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move to adjourn.
For a second?
A second.
Thank you. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Thank you for everybody and thank you to Jeff and Ginny for that presentation and putting together all of that for our budget hearing for the public. Thank you.